Yeah, they're right in the middle of the street.
Hi. I'm from high school. Hey.
I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, December tenth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great honor of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
And Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Quorm is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the council agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. The next item is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by the accidental group to operate a medical marijuana facility at seventy-two thirty-eight Manchester. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that topic? Or does the petitioner want to say any words? Okay. Then this public hearing is now closed. The next item is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Eric Moore of Boardwalk Waffles and Ice Cream relocating to seventy-three seventy-six Manchester Avenue for a full Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic? Anyone at all? Okay. That public hearing is now complete. Next item is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Zhao Xu Lin. Is that even close? Of Shunda Restaurant LLC doing business as Yummy Tummy located at three thousand two South Big Ben for a full Sunday liquor license. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that topic? Okay. Then that public hearing is closed. The next item is a public forum where you have an opportunity to talk about any topic that's of importance to the city of Maplewood. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any topic? Okay. Well, then, we'll close the public forum. The next item is a railroad quiet zone presentation with Ron Simpson, railroad safety inspector for the Federal Railroad Administration, about the crossing at Sutton in Greenwood. Howdy. Good timing, too.
Yeah. Yeah. I really don't have a presentation. I'm really here to either maybe inform everybody or maybe answer some questions about the quiet zone process and what Washington DC is looking at when it comes to the quiet zones. So Maplewood has a pre-rule quiet zone, which is a quiet zone that was established prior to there being any regulations on quiet zones. In nineteen ninety-four, the city of Maplewood filed a petition basically stating they were going to implement the quiet zone. Today's standards are much harder to get one. And so what Washington is looking at is all of the pre-rule quiet zones that have had accidents or incidents in the previous five years. And they're ranked, and a formula is used to calculate a certain number to find out if those quiet zones are still good or if they are not good. Okay? And as you know, there have been a few incidents at this particular crossing. So the formula doesn't, in today's standards, Maplewood's quiet zone would not qualify to be a quiet zone. So the question is, is basically, I just want to inform you all of that so that if the city is looking at doing some upgrades there in conjunction with the Great Rivers Greenway project or whatever the city has in mind, I think it would be, it depends on how valuable that quiet zone is to the city. But i- if the city does want to keep that quiet zone, it would probably be very beneficial if they did some upgrades there. And when I say upgrades, I'll just kind of give you, like, in today's standards, if a community wanted to go and put in a quiet zone, there's a few things that they could do. They would have to put four quad gates in, which you guys have a two quad system now, which would mean that there would have to be two gates added on each side. That would qualify a quiet zone. Some crossings, they put medians, median barriers down the middle of the roadway, which this is a very tricky intersection because you could only do medians on one side. And then as myself and Mr. Traxler are out there looking at it, you've got an entrance to turn with some semis and it becomes pretty tricky. I don't know if you've discussed anything with them as far as maybe a traffic engineer looking at.
No, but that's why I wanted you to come here.
Okay.
So whatever they end up seeing, why we're doing it.
Yeah, so, so I don't know if you guys have any connections with the city of Kirkwood, but a few years ago, they did have a traffic study done prior to their quiet zone and did some upgrades at their crossings. I'm not sure what firm they used, but it might be something you would, before you just say, yep, we're going to put in four quads or we're going to do something, it might really be beneficial to have somebody like that look at your zone and come up with some ideas. It's the most cost effective. Any questions? I know, I know that's a lot thrown out there in a few seconds here, but.
Is there a specific criteria with regards to the design of these type of intersections that would ensure that we're able to maintain, you know, a quiet zone?
So what the, the language in the federal regulations right now say that if a community puts in what we call an SSM, it's a supplemental safety measure, that that is a pre-approved safety measure that once that is installed, typically, nobody really looks at the crossings anymore. The reason that they're looking at yours is because it doesn't have any of those SSMs. It's just a kind of Wild West-type crossing. And that four quad gate would be the pre-approved SSM that would be probably the most beneficial in this area. With that being said, not bringing up any particular incidents, however, the one that we're most recent familiar with, I don't know that anything would have.
Right.
Solved that problem. So if my knowledge of that situation is accurate.
So, you know, my question is that, you know, you said that the, you know, some of the criteria, you know, for establishing a quiet zone are the accidents and incidents. Would that particular incident that you're referring to count against?
It would because it is, they're considering that a grade crossing incident. Had it been a hundred yards in either direction of that crossing, it wouldn't go towards the formula used to get the calculation. In this particular case, it will be used. It may be a year or two years before we see that, that come into effect because the federal government's so slow at inputting data. But the most recent incident that I'm showing, I've got ten, I pulled ten incidents at that particular crossing that date back to nineteen seventy-seven. The most recent one on our, in our database was from twenty eighteen. And I believe that was maybe an elderly person just turned onto the tracks. Once again, would another set of gates prevented that? You know, we can't, nobody can really decide that. But those things do go against that formula.
Well, you know, by your own admission, the, you know, the safety measures, you know, the incident that just occurred probably may or may not, probably wouldn't have been prevented by, you know, these vehicular safety measures because it was a pedestrian incident. So, you know, obviously, you know, in trying to preserve the, you know, the well-being and, you know, of our citizens that are affected by, you know, the train whistles being sounded at the, at the intersection, I'd hate to see something like that be used as, as evidence that, you know, we need, you know, that the engineer, you know, blew his horn, you know, and, you know, so creating a quiet zone, you know, even an incident like that obviously wouldn't have, you know, the, you know, it's not like he didn't blow the horn because it's a quiet zone. You know, he did so, did that because he had to, and we have no problem certainly with that in occurrence, you know, that, like that, but, you know, I guess we won't know if there's any changes to our designation until.
Well.
For about a year?
So are you guys aware of the letter that was sent out July this year to the city? Kind of putting the, no, that, the reason why I asked Ron here is because we get letters that say we're, we're in compliance. But when we were meeting out September, maybe? Yeah. October, September, just making sure the GRG trail didn't have any impact. That's when Ron said, my initial calculations, and I was off just by a fraction, said you're over, and that means next year it'll change. And then you went back and did his numbers and said, actually, you're under, but you're only under by a few hundred points out of twenty-six thousand. And I ran them again and before yesterday in preparation for this meeting, and the city, it's way over. It is over. So what happened from now to September? I can't answer that. I don't know. And when I, when we say it's over, what happens is there's a, there's a number, and this year it is thirteen thousand eight hundred and something is the nationwide risk threshold for a crossing with a train giving an audible warning. And every year, that number can change. And when we throw your crossing into this, and this is public knowledge, anybody can get on the FRA website and plug any crossing in, and it'll give a formula and show you if you're quiet, if you're wanting to prepare a new quiet zone, it'll tell you if your, your zone will qualify under the parameters of that crossing. And it gives, it calculates all of the collision history. And so when I input this particular crossing into that zone, it has to be at or below the nationwide risk threshold, and this crossing is way above that. And so then what you would do, if you were trying to implement a new crossing, you start adding these supplemental safety measures. We would say, okay, let's add four quad gates to that and see what it does to the number. And typically, it always takes it way down below the nationwide risk threshold. I hope that makes sense. And then maybe a median barrier doesn't take it as far down as the four quad gate, but it takes it down far enough to where you're below that number.
So when we're saying a median barrier, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear, if you're north of the tracks, we can do a median barrier running from the tracks north to Sutton, or pardon me, north to Manchester, going right down the middle of Sutton. So traffic can't go around it to try to get around a train if somebody stopped. That's the idea of the median barrier. The problem is on the south side, which would be Greenwood, because you can't run a median barrier there because you have the two-way traffic running east and west. And so there's a, an intersection in Kirkwood, working with, there's a couple of traffic or consultants that specialize working with the railroad. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but if, you need to get somebody familiar with their requirements because they're, they're kind of strict. And so if we get an SSM, a qualified SSM, the quiet zone would be maintained. If we wanted to do the quad gates, it would be maintained. The problem is the quad gates are extremely expensive. So doing the median barriers or make, or looking at some other alternative methods that a consulting engineer could come through and analyze and work with the railroad is what I'm going to suggest to the council. Again, when I scheduled this, I thought we were just under the threshold. I'm finding out we're now with you that we're just over the threshold.
Yeah.
And that's why I scheduled it when I realized we were low, because every year we get this, they send me a letter and it says, you're fine. And the only reason I even got to talking with Ron was because of the fact that we had a truck turning off of Pacific that got stuck on the tracks, and then we had the elderly gentleman that drove down the tracks. And so we made, the city took some proactive steps. We added some of those bollards, we added some lights, we modified some signage to try to make it better. And in my communication with Ron, I realized, this is pretty close, and this is going to be a costly expenditure that I think the council needs to hear directly from him. So when I come to you with the budget item, you're not wondering what's going on. But it would probably take up a, be into the hundreds of thousands of dollars if we did the quad gates, because you not only have to do the actual gates, the two we have right now are considered obsolete. They're too old. We'd have to replace those two with four, and that's, that's even further down the line. They have to have that mechanism that obviously alerts you of the train. So it's not just a matter of four gates, it's an entire alert system that we have to replace there. That would be the solution that would guarantee basically your quiet zone. Some of the other opportunities which are cheaper, the pedestrian barrier and possibly changing traffic on.
Right.
Greenwood to one way, so we could do some sort of pedestrian barrier. Those will be all options that I'm assuming this consultant, which I'm going to recommend in the future to hire to look at this, would, would come back to the council, and at that point, you guys could make the decision of what, what you'd like to go. But I'd obviously work with, Ron has been the most helpful person since nineteen ninety-nine working with a rail, with a railroad. We're done for Maplewood than anyone.
Yeah, I want to be really clear that I'm not from DC down here saying we have to do something or we're taking your quiet zone. I'm, I'm trying to get ahead of all of that and inform you of what they're looking at. So if you do want to do something, we can do it before that.
If he didn't tell me about this, I would have gotten the letter in June that would have said it's no longer a quiet zone. I would have no idea. Very thankful.
Go ahead.
I had a question. So I thought you had said earlier that if you implement one of the supplement safety measures, no one looks at your crossing again. But that depends, it sounds like, because every year, you're going to reevaluate based on a number system?
They, they do reevaluate it, but if you have one of the pre-approved supplemental safety measures, I, let's just put it this way, they've never, ever revoked one of those.
Okay, so you'll tend to meet that threshold every year regardless of how they change it, the number?
Yes, you should. Who knows what the future will come up with.
Right, but in general.
As of right now, if you have, let's just say, if you have a four quad gate, you'll probably never have to worry about me coming back saying that there's, there's a chance that you're getting ready with your quiet zone.
Have you seen any grant funding opportunities? Are you aware of any of them out there?
I am not. In fact, this is one of the things, I mean, if you talk about the Section one thirty funds or the MAP, there's a bunch of different funds out there. This is one of those particular things that cannot get funded, that it's, it's, because it's a, it's a, it's seen as a luxury. Everybody would, everybody in the rail industry, I guess, the railroad, the private sector railroads would rather see them blow the horn than not blow the horn. So they don't want to spend their dollars on that.
Let me ask one question. We have a representative from GRG here. Have you seen any funding opportunities utilized to make these type of improvements?
Not that I'm aware of, holding Crater's grants that we would use in any transportation project would be the ones, same ones that you guys use for any road improvement, transportation related. So I'm not sure if those types of improvements, safety improvements would qualify. Perhaps some of the medians could be potentially, if that's what the design ends up being, you know, recommended by the consultant. But nothing specific for the gates and for the system that he is suggesting as a.
Well, it's obvious that we're going to have to coordinate GRG's efforts with any work that we do as, as a city to make that inf, intersection as safe as possible. And, and at the same time, try and maintain our quiet zone for the peace and mind of our citizens.
Sometimes, it doesn't matter what we do, we're going to have issues at intersections like that, unfortunately. We see it every day. That intersection is, I mean, anyone that's driven it knows people don't, you know, because it's the two-way stop, and it's just when you're, when you're heading south, people honk, and we were sitting out there talking, twice or three or four people honking at each other. We were only out there twenty-five minutes.
I sat there for a little while this evening, and one, this has nothing to do with compliance, but from a safety standpoint, one of the concerns that I have is the pedestrian traffic that crosses, that doesn't use the crossing itself. They cross thirty, forty yards in either direction. You know, some, some areas like that have, have fencing that come down to the crossing to mitigate that. Maybe just, if you're putting a lot of money into this area, maybe that's, maybe that's a thought from a safety standpoint.
Well, we've done that. What, what is the distance from the intersection to the beginning of the fence?
I don't know. That was actually put up by.
Yeah, that was real.
Right.
They put it up, I think, closer toward Big Ben.
But now, I do know that there are some funding opportunities and partnerships for that type of thing with the railroads, homeland security, even the FRA has, has some things available. And right now, the FRA is offering some grant money for law enforcement to go out and basically sit at these locations, not necessarily write tickets to the individuals for trespassing, but to educate them, talk to them, and go down the crossing where you're supposed to cross. Once again, some people view that as a waste of time, but I find it beneficial to educate people.
Does anyone else have questions?
Anthony, is this something that for future, we could use Prop P funds for because that is public safety?
I, I don't know. I haven't looked at that. I don't know.
Okay.
If anybody should have questions after tonight, he knows how to reach me. I'm available.
Thanks for coming out and making the presentation. Okay, item number eleven, our announcements. Are there any announcements?
Well, the only thing I know of that's coming up is the Sweet Tooth Tour. That's January the twenty-fifth, and tickets are already on sale, so. And sometimes they go real fast.
Item number twelve is approval of the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen city council meeting minutes and closed session minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Karen, would you like to start with item number thirteen?
Motion to approve a full Sunday liquor license for Eric Moore of Boardwalk Waffles and Ice Cream relocating to seventy-three seventy-six Manchester.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Is there a representative here from Boardwalk? Okay. So the, tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing with liquor license, please.
I'll be incorporating live music on weekends. It's something that holds a little more slack. And as a musician, I always think of a place that there's something that happens, that has some swing and blues. So I thought in the hours of the beer flying, it'd be a little cool. Plus, I'll be with the move, I'll have about forty seats, forty people per seat.
This item, is it on the. Oh, sorry. It's down a corner.
Same thing with selling, but just an enhancement that goes along with the.
Okay, does anyone else have questions? Roll call, please. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That doesn't require any further, okay. Item number fourteen, please.
Motion to approve a full Sunday liquor license for Sukey Lin of Yummy Tummy located at three thousand one South Big Ben.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and I see that the owners are here. Are there any questions that we have with regards to this request? Will you please come, come and state your name and.
My name's David, I'm not representing for Sukey Lin, because English is kind of a bit.
Okay.
It's, it's actually correct in the public hearing and wording. It was not correct in our notes, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And Anthony, where are we with regards to the number of liquor licenses that we have available?
I don't have an updated number, but I know we changed that a while back. As long as it's a restaurant, you're fine. But you guys made that amendment probably, I don't know, a year and a half ago.
And everyone's aware that, of the fifty percent requirement?
Fifty-one percent, yeah.
Fifty-one percent, okay.
And that is just a Maplewood requirement. That's not a requirement by the state or the county. That is just ours. We don't have to do that.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Item number fifteen, please.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city clerk to take all actions necessary to place on the ballot a proposal to increase the current sales tax for the purpose of providing funding for fire services from one quarter of one percent to one-half of one percent.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Would the fire chief like to make a brief presentation?
So in a nutshell, I know you're aware, the fire department has deferred equipment purchases for a few years now. Obviously, you know, with the fire trucks that you've recently approved, those were also deferred due to the advent of funding to do it. Unfortunately, we're, you know, moving forward, but that should be really happy. There is a point where they have to be replaced. We've also deferred a number of other major equipment purchases, and we're due to make some other major equipment purchases. And of course, the fire sales tax increasing and essentially doubling that revenue would allow revenue to support those purchases. Furthermore, kind of like the police department with the public safety tax, we've also needed to supplement our staffing like they did. And I would hope that we'd be able to, with that, some of that revenue, be able to supplement that staffing. So there's definitely a need for it, and that is in a nutshell, the basis for those needs at this point in time.
Approximately how much revenue will be generated more per year?
Well, last year, the course in fire sales tax revenue had its best, best year on record. It was over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A more typical figure is between six hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand. So obviously, if you're doubling it, it would double that figure. So I think a safer estimate is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that, I think, is a reasonable amount to count even forward.
Are there any questions from council?
So is this sales tax, I know the money's separate, but when added to our total sales tax in the city, what, what is our sales tax currently? Do you know, Anthony?
Anthony?
I don't have that number right now, but I can get that for you. We're over, we're getting close to ten.
Yeah, it's nine point two.
It's pretty high. I think it's when I looked, I tried to look online. Does this tax apply to everything, including necessities like food and clothing and things like that?
The fire sales tax, my understanding is, it's, by statute, it's to fund fire department operations, no matter what they are. Typically, with the fire department, going back to two thousand and three, we had used it to fund salaries and pretty much all of our equipment purchases. Originally, in two thousand and three, when the city was going through its crisis, seven salaries were moved from the general fund. Originally, in two thousand and three, when the city was going through its crisis, um, seven salaries were moved from the general fund into the fire sales tax account, essentially relieving the general fund of that burden, so to speak.
I, I think that the question was, was, was applicable.
Is the tax, is the tax placed on items like food and clothing and?
I'm sorry.
Anything subject to sales tax?
My understanding is it applies to all purchases, but I'm not an expert on that.
So then, you know, we're adding to what, if someone of limited means, we're just increa-, we're, it will apply to that. So getting food, it will cost more.
It's actually, you don't cut a nickel, um, extra, around a quarter percent extra than what would be on the tax roll now. So I think it's quite, I think um, in uh, like at Walmart, it's nine point three eight percent.
It's nine point two eight.
Two eight, so you'd add.
Well, it's nine point three eight there because of the TDD, but it's nine point two eight without it.
So it adds point two five to that, which is already being collected.
Anthony, are there any taxes that are set to sunset uh, anytime soon? Or all of them?
No.
Okay. Okay. Jenny, did you have?
I have one more. Oh, sorry. Um, so it sounds like this tax wouldn't relieve any further burn from the general fund. It would be all.
Well, I do believe there is room in that fire sales tax account to transfer some cost.
Okay.
From the general fund to that fire sales tax and accomplish the equipment purchases.
Okay.
And address some of the staffing uh, that we'd like to add.
It's gonna have to go. There's gonna have to be some relief for the general fund. All you need to do is look at some of these numbers.
Yeah.
Page twenty of forty-one.
Yeah.
Page thirty-one of forty-one.
And by the way, very excellent um, with the workup of the fire, fire sales tax. That was fantastic.
I just, and we'll get more into these overall numbers in, in general, but I really kind of wanted to focus. I try to keep it simple on three funds to show you three funds that I don't believe are coming back and it's not unique to Maplewood. I think other cities are gonna be looking for other means. I know I'm a sane and did a citywide Cid. Obviously, the state legislator changed this because cities are hurting for different reasons. But if you just look at our revenue, or pardon me, our revenues in uh, two thousand and eleven, you're at eight point two seven four million. Expenses, eight point one million. If you jump ahead to eighteen, nineteen, revenues dipped down to seven point nine four two million. Expenses are at nine point oh nine four million. We, we're continually dipping into our general revenue fund to the point where standard emporers indicated we can't keep doing so. We've taken some corrective actions with the proposition P for the, or pardon, proposition T for trash. Proposition S for sewer lateral. But right now, even with the sewer lateral at the maximum rate at fifty cents or fifty dollars per household, we're still barely getting by with that. And, and we've also, uh, with the firehouse, the, the expense went over by quite a bit. There's been a number of years we've been chipping away at our reserves. We can't continue to do that. Right now, we're paying seventy-five percent of our costs in our general fund are going to personnel. A number that's typical is probably right around more seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two. So what I'm saying is there's really no, no fat to trim there. The numbers should be very indicative that that's what I'm talking about. So um, as if other depart-, as with, when the police department had their, their Prop P money, they transferred officers out and put it into there. They've, or they've, they were basically paying for the salaries of two officers out of the Prop P money. I believe you'll have to do a little bit of everything with this and, and we'll get much more into detail on this um, when we're going through the budget. The fire may want additional personnel. Uh, they definitely need additional equipment, but that's what we'll look at as part of the overall budget process.
Yeah.
And I think Marty's ultimate replacement needs to make that decision, uh, or at least make that recommendation, not me. I'm in an interim role. So at this point, you know, I think we just need to get it on the ballot. We're gonna put out literature that's gonna be somewhat open-ended, talking about personnel, talking about um, equipment needs. Um, right now, we're four hundred and eighty thousand dollars over budget in this fund because the last budget you guys approved was including all the fire trucks we just purchased. So if, if this doesn't go on and it doesn't pass, we're gonna have to find another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars somewhere in the budget, which means personnel's gonna need to be cut. You see in that memo I wrote, I've already cut three and a half employees out of my public works department since I've been public works director in two thousand and eleven. I can't cut any more because otherwise we can't provide snow services and basic services. I mean, right now, the budget is tight. We're not as tight right as where we were in oh-three. We are losing employees on a monthly basis, but we are very tight right now. And again, we'll flush these numbers out in a little more detail when we're doing our overall budget work sessions. But right now, um, we need additional sources of revenue.
And to clarify though, Prop P, we didn't move any officers from general fund. They, they hired two.
Yeah, but we hired two new officers.
Didn't relieve that burden in any way, I guess.
But those were positions that were, we would need those positions if you look at our overall number of police calls versus the number of police officers.
But that's my, that was why my question here is, are we gonna be doing the same thing, just adding, or are we alleviating any burden?
That's gonna be, that's gonna be, it's gonna be presented to you at, when the budget's presented and at that point, you guys will make those decisions. There's no question the equipment purchases are very far behind. Um, I believe, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, they've pulled some of the old apparatus off the prior fire.
Oh, yeah.
They're still using. And standards keep changing and requirements keep changing where they need to upgrade their equipment. What did you tell me the cardiac monitors were?
They're, they're going upwards of thirty thousand dollars.
And so you're replacing all the monitors. I mean, these, these, these fire items, they, they really add up. These uh, I mean, if I had to guess what a cardiac monitor, I'd have probably guessed ten thousand. I wouldn't have guessed thirty thousand. And they've got to replace them all. Um, these things are mandated. They'd be replaced every now and then or on a set schedule. So um, well, I'm not necessarily asking how we're gonna pay for it now. I'm just asking to get this necessary revenue source on the ballot. Cause we have to turn it in to get on the April seventh ballot. We have to turn it in um, early June. So I'm just looking, pardon me, January, thank you. And uh, at that, when we go through the budget process, when you guys will ultimately make the decision, because you guys will be approving the final budget.
Are there any other questions from council?
Mayor, would you allow me to approach the podium and make your comments on behalf of the firefighters?
That okay with everyone? Please.
I appreciate, I know that was unorthodox, so I appreciate the time. My name is uh, David Neumeyer. And I'm a member of the professional firefighters of twenty-six sixty-five. I would like to read a letter drafted by the Maplewood Fire Department shop. Mayor and city council members, recently, it has come to the fire department's attention that a bill was passed that lets cities have been utilized a quarter cent fire tax to expand to half cent. Upon hearing this, our department spoke to administration about possibly finding ways that we could benefit from the additional tax by helping with equipment purchases, adding manpower to our rank and file to get closer to national standards, plan for bigger purchases in the future, and possibly help relieve the general fund. The professional firefighters of Maplewood want to ensure that the tax money will be going to the fire department to be used for its intended purpose. We understand that like most cities, we are facing shortfalls in our budgets and that the glory days of the Maplewood Commons development are starting to flatten out. With that said, the operating costs to run and continually improve a fire department are increasing every year. And we need to secure funds to make sure that we continue to provide the best service to our citizens. It is our mission to come together with city officials to map out a plan where the funds will be allocated. By se-, by securing the additional quarter cent, the fire department will be able to make necessary changes to their department's structure and provide a safer and more efficient operation in the firehouse and on the fire ground. Many studies have found that our department is greatly deficient in our ratio of our command staff to firefighting personnel, along with being, being able to meet the national standards for safer fire ground operations. Just as the police department was rightfully able to use their Prop P funds to add three positions and add much-needed equipment, we ask that a fire tax be used for what it is intended for and not used to get the city out of a budget crisis. In conclusion, we ask the city administration to work with our organization to reach a consensus on how to most effectively spend the funds. I appreciate your time and thank you for hearing. Allow me to come up.
Okay. Uh, are there any further questions on, on this? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Partini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Resolution is approved, number nineteen dash fifty-five.
Item number sixteen, please.
Bill sixty-one twenty-nine, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Rom Narion of Occidental Group to operate a medicinal marijuana dispensary facility at seventy-two thirty-eight Manchester Road.
Motion to table for the reading of the findings of fact.
Second.
Uh, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please read the findings.
The mayor and city council make the following findings of fact for the petition for a conditional use permit for a medicinal marijuana facility at seventy-two thirty-eight Manchester Road. The proposed use complies with all applicable provisions of the zoning code. The proposed use will contribute to and promote the community welfare and convenience. The proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of neighboring property. The proposed use does comply with the overall neighborhood development plan and existing zoning provisions. The proposed use will provide, if applicable, off-street parking and loading areas in accordance with the standards of the zoning code. The proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards. The proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. The proposed use will not overtax public utilities. The proposed use will not place an undue burden on municipal services.
Motion to approve the findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's a, is a roll call? It's a roll call.
I'm sorry. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Partini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Motion to bring the bill back on the table.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, the, are there any further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
It's a voice vote.
Voice vote, I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Partini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one twenty-nine is approved, ordinance number five nine two four.
Item number seventeen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending ordinance five five seven three of the Maplewood Code of Ordinances as amended by amending chapter fifty, traffic and motor vehicles, section fifty dash two forty-three, other prohibitions on parking by amending Cherry Street, thirty-one hundred block, west side of street near Elm Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Cherry Street, thanks you.
Councilmember Partini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one thirty is approved, ordinance number five nine two five.
Okay. Item number eighteen, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-one, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an STP urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the city of Maplewood for project number STP five five three six, TIP sixty-nine oh two dash twenty, Manchester Road, phase four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Partini?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one thirty-one is approved, ordinance number five nine two six.
Item number nineteen, please.
And bill sixty-one thirty-two, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending ordinance five five seven three as amended, chapter forty-four subdivisions, section forty-four dash sixteen, minor boundary adjustments, subsection A of the city code to allow lot consolidation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Yeah, real quick, I went here for the last meeting. The purpose of this, Anthony, was because we didn't have clear enough language in this particular ordinance for lot consolidation?
The purpose was essentially, instead of lot consolidations, making them go through an entire subdivision process, which is planning, commission, city council, city council, additional costs. They could just come through a boundary adjustment process where it can be done administratively.
Okay.
Twenty-minute, ten-minute review.
Sounds good.
So I did have one question. So is this like if someone owns all the lots? It's not if you have, like, this doesn't apply in a situation of someone to buy up a whole bunch of lots and then combine them?
They'd have to own, they'd have to own the parcel.
But like, could someone, like, there's no size limitation on it? Where it would have to come back through us? Like, if it was a huge piece of land, someone bought a bunch?
Consolidating and creating one lot? No. If you were, if you were subdividing and creating additional lots, then yes, it would come to you. But no, if, if, a, a typical boundary adjustment is um, you know, a neighbor needs a, a couple of feet on their side yard because they want to put in a driveway and they've only got seven feet, they need nine feet for a legal driveway. Or they want to put in a deck and they don't have the necessary room. So that's typically what your boundary adjustments are. Actually, I got the idea from John Hustle because he said, you know, a lot of cities are going away from that. If you're actually consolidating, they're creating a lot and making it bigger. A subdivision is kind of an unusual step to make them go through that. So this is just a simple matter. If you're gonna subdivide lots, or pardon, consolidate lots, that you would just be able to do it administratively. I sent Eleanor, Councilmember Partini, some, some notes as well. Um, I think I sent the QuickTrip as an example. The lot that where the QuickTrip currently is, everyone assumed that was one lot. That was actually nine lots.
So I guess, I guess my question is if someone bought up a bunch of lots and wanted to build some huge thing on it, I mean, would they still be able to do that regardless of if they were one lot or multiple?
You know, like a big home? Like if I bought four home lots, I bought a monster home?
Huge ugly, you know?
I mean, I don't think that planning and zoning would allow for that. It wouldn't match.
Well, that's why I'm asking. I mean, I just wanna make sure there's other sort of.
Designer view has language in there, which, because I even looked at, uh, planning commission looked at a while back at, you know, tiny houses and there was language in there that the designer review board could.
So you'd still have to go through other processes that would sort of be a.
There's nothing right now, though, if somebody came through and bought multiple lots and demoed multiple homes that they, I mean, if they came in and wanted that subdiv-, that lot subdivision consolidated, I don't know how you could turn it down if they went through the subdivision process.
So that it would, alright.
Or, or the lot consolidation process. But, but what's, what's interesting is there are multiple lots out there. If you go in the county records, they have one locator number, they have one address.
But they're, yeah.
But they're multiple lots. The um, the QuickTrip was an example, because I pulled out a couple of recent ones. The other one was the All-Star Tattoo location, just north of Autozone. It looks like there are three lots there. There are actually five lots there.
Okay.
And so let's say somebody wants to come in and do an addition. You can't build across lot lines. Uh, where in the, in the past, they would do that. They didn't worry about zoning restrictions. Now, obviously, that's kind of changed. So if someone would want to come in and they give you that subdivision, they wanted to put a rear addition that's going across lot lines, I wouldn't approve that because they'd have to consolidate those lots first. So that's why a lot of your subdivisions come in. People are gonna do an addition or, or potentially build a new home.
Right.
On a lot where it's maybe nine lots versus, or two or three lots versus one single lot. And so I say, well, you've got to consolidate those lots first because you can't build across lot lines. And so I could just do that administratively now as opposed to making them go through that process.
So they would get it approved anyway. It's just an easier way to do it, is what you're saying.
If I had to, if I had to guess, you know, we may do one every other year. It's not like it's something we do on a regular basis. It's not a major impact, but it's just kind of a.
What it, what it would allow is a lot of the, quite a number of the lots in Maplewood are not large enough to tear down the house and build a new house. Cause they need to be six thousand square feet. So if the lot is, and a lot of the lots here are five thousand or so square feet. They're smaller.
Right. I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, I just wanna, wanna be in a situation where someone comes in, buys a lot of stuff, where we. where we, as a council representing the community, who may not want something like that, are giving up oversight of that.
And that's possible, but it's also possible if they went through and did that.
It's, right.
They came through the subdivision process, as long as they meet the requirements.
They would also have to go through Historic Preservation Commission.
Right, I'm just, I, that's why I'm just, I'm not familiar with all the processes.
And through the designer review board after.
Alright, okay.
Now, the, the project that I'm working on, Maple, uh, I got the survey back and it shows two lots. You know, it's, it's always been one address, so, you know, I didn't even, I just assumed that it had been consolidated at some point.
Very common in Maplewood, people assume, um, they've got one lot and they may not, especially in the, in the commercial areas.
Good.
Okay.
Used to be homes there many, many years ago.
Okay, are there any other questions on this? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one thirty-two is approved, ordinance number five-nine-two-seven.
Item number twenty, please.
Bill sixty-one thirty-three, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute a user agreement between Saint Louis County and the city of Maplewood for use of the Saint Louis County agency's interoperable radio system.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crater?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill sixty-one thirty-three is approved, ordinance number five-nine-two-eight.
Item number twenty-one is council communications. Is there anyone that has anything to communicate?
Um, everyone has a copy of my report from the NLC conference that Mayor Greenberg and I attended. It was, uh, three, four solid days of great programming this year. Um, I feel like this year, it was even well, uh, even more curated to focus on housing, which is a huge topic for us here in Maplewood. So it was really timely and, um, I appreciated the, uh, opportunity to attend those sessions. And, um, I just gave some high-level notes regarding that. So if anyone has any questions, um, after having a chance to look it over, please reach out and let me know.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other council, yeah, Jane?
Um, I attended the school board meeting on November twenty-first. It was a long one, three and a half hours long. Um, but at it, a resident spoke at the public forum about the intersection right out there. Um, she said that often people run that light at Oakland. And so she, uh, called Missouri Department of Transportation and they told her it was up to the school board to make that a school zone. So she asked them about that. She also asked them about providing a crossing guard there, um, which I don't think is a bad idea. But I just wanted to bring it up here since I know there is a contract for us to purchase, or we are, that will sometime become ours, or just to work, you know, if that issue comes up, um, in the community about if there's any way we can help the school board if they do decide to do something like that.
Amber has asked me about that and I asked her a couple of follow-up questions.
Okay.
She was going to get with the school board, because I said, are you looking for speed zones? And if so, that would be an amendment and just put me together and writing and we can get it. She said she was going to talk with the school board at the next meeting and then come back to me. And so I imagine I'll be hearing back from Amber, uh, over short.
I plan on attending that, so I can...
How does, how would a speed zone stop somebody from running a red light?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But that's why when she said school zone, I said, what is it you're looking for?
I don't...
Are you looking, I, my, the assumption is, is you're looking to, for reduced speeds? Is that what she said? She said, I'm not totally sure exactly what they want, so let me get back to you.
Cool.
And I, I don't think a crossing guard's a bad idea there.
No, no, probably not. But I don't want one killed either.
Yeah, right. Although we have, you know, their alternative is QT, so I'm not sure. Um, so anyway.
On a, on a similar note, I received a, a interview request from one of the local Boy Scouts, um, working on his, citizen in the community merit badge. And one of the things he wanted to interview about was, um, the extent of jaywalkers, mainly students, crossing Manchester and Big Bend and what students could do to try to curb that. So we had a interesting exchange of ideas of what, uh...
Use the crosswalks?
Yes.
Well, and then there's the new one up there where that medians going in, right up on...
The mayor also, he also interviewed the mayor about, about that as well.
Are there any other council communications?
Well, council member Pardini and myself and Anthony, um, we attended the Webster Groves Town Hall meeting. And it was, their town hall meeting was just about housing. I wasn't exactly sure what it was going to be, but I wanted to go and just see how it was going to be. So, um, one of the things that I really liked was their fact sheet. Did you remember getting the fact sheet? And it's got everything about all the demographic in, information, uh, the income levels of people that live in Webster and the housing values and, uh, the renting in, in the town and how much is rental and how much section eight buildings. And I just thought I would really like to see, this is a great format, easy to read and it's just really nice. I'd like for us to be able to do one of these. So we kind of know, you know, and we might have one, I don't know, but I don't remember seeing it if we did.
You'd like that as well, very useful.
Yeah, I thought it was great, so I'd like to have one of those if we could.
I'll make sure to put a reference because if you remember, somebody challenged...
Pardon me?
Remember somebody challenged, uh, the mayor on where they got the facts from, so I'll make sure to reference.
Oh, yeah, they've got on here where they got, got it from, but I don't know.
Any other council communications? In terms of the, uh, mayor's report, uh, in addition to, to what you said, uh, the, uh, the census is, census is going to be taken soon and, uh, I encourage everyone to, uh, participate in the process. It's important that we have an accurate counting of, uh, of, uh, demographic information about our city. And, uh, I don't believe there's going to be any contentious questions at this point on the census. But, uh, in addition to that, uh, I, I also, uh, attended the National League of Cities and I've been remiss in not putting together, uh, Sandy and I did, uh, attend some of the, the sessions together, but we tried to, uh, take different paths so we could bring more information back to the, uh, citizens of Maplewood. And thirdly, uh, after the first of the year, we're going to hold, uh, the first meeting of the senior commission. So if you know of any of your citizens, uh, your constituents that might be interested in participating, if I have to drive and pick them up on the way, which I've talked to quite a few people that don't have transportation, and that's one of the many issues that we need to address, uh, with regards to, uh, issues affecting our senior citizens. So we want to get their input and anyone else that wants to serve in that capacity to provide input on, uh, programs that we can, uh, implement in Maplewood. Part of the National, uh, League of Cities, uh, one of the mobile workshops I took was, uh, visiting a, uh, senior center in, uh, North San Antonio. And if we could have, and, a facility like that, uh, we would do a lot for our senior citizens. We don't have the resources, the land, the facility, anything like that. So we need to be very creative in how we, uh, facilitate our seniors to age in place in Maplewood. So any recommendations, uh, please send me their contact information.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many people are sitting on that?
Uh, right now, I've, I've got a preliminary list, uh, and it's not full yet.
How many total spots are there?
Uh, I don't know if, if there's a, uh, at this point, if, it's, it's sort of an informal commission. And, uh, we haven't met yet, so I've got to check in with the people that, you know, previously committed. Uh, but, uh, I don't see any reason to limit, uh, is there any statutory reason, uh, requirement to limit the number of people on the commission?
Not that I know off the top of my head, but I can check in.
Okay. Uh, I feel that the more people we have, the better off we are, uh, the more input that we can have. So...
So is it an advisory board or a...
It's an advisory board that will serve in the same capacity as, as most of the other advisory boards and commissions, uh, and make recommendations to city council for us to consider as part of our, uh, service to our community. Uh, item number twenty-three is the city attorney's report.
I have nothing to report.
Item number twenty-four is the city manager's report.
I've just got a couple of, uh, discussion items. I've got quite a few, actually. The, uh, I'll start with a three-way intersection of Sutton and Marietta. Uh, I think the reason, everyone's probably familiar with that, where we do not have a stop sign heading south. The initial reason was because we did not want traffic to back up on Manchester, uh, if you're heading southbound on, uh, Sutton at Marietta. And, um, we get a lot of complaints about that and I just was curious if the council does see that as a problem or not. I know I, I, uh, I am totally usually opposed to adding stop signs, except I think in here, may, may warrant one.
I would say yes. And as someone who has to pull out daily from that intersection, from the Marietta lot, I have to go into the crosswalk to even see if there's cars coming so I can turn left. So it's unsafe in that way, too, you're...
They assume there's one there.
Yeah.
And so they start to pull out a T-bone.
I mean, I know it's there, but I'm just saying, I'm also then impeding another crosswalk in order to see if it's safe for me to turn. So yes, I would agree.
I would like to try it because I've had complaints from a couple residents now. One by email and then one in person. And they're complaining about that and saying that some of their neighbors are complaining about it. And, um, so I think we should try it and see if we have an issue or at least try it. See if it cuts down on the safety.
The alternative would be removing parking, which no one wants to do, so I think...
Because people have also noted to me that no one can see that crosswalk either. You know, we have the added signs on two others, but there's not one there, so there's nothing drawing attention to it either and there's no stop sign, so...
Have we had any incidents or yet?
We have had some there.
We have?
But I mean, we've had them in most every intersection, especially in that busy area.
Right.
All pedestrians walking in.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And that's the intersection that I, you know, cross most. And most people are respectful. It's obvious that some people don't realize that there's no stop signs. So when I make a left turn onto Marietta, some people, you know, assume that I'm stopping and they just go ahead and pull out.
And that's the initial complaint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, it's, after I got that, your email, uh, councilmember Wood, I, I was looking to see how many cars I see heading south. I just don't see that that would ever back up on the Manchester. But if it does, we can always make an adjustment, so I'll go ahead and draft something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, resident-only parking, uh, we have a small residential-only parking zone there. We have one individual who is, in my view, abusing that. They've got three vehicles, uh, they're parking in the Marietta parking lot, but they're not parking in their resident-only spots. They're leaving it wide open, which is basically taking two spa, parking spots away from that immediate area and they're parking three vehicles in the, uh, Marietta parking lot. I think it's completely counter to what the idea of the resident-only parking was created for, to let them park in front of their house. And so, um, I, I, it got me, the reason I'm bringing it to the council's point of view is I'm going to send that, send this resident a, a letter and indicate, here's what I'm observing and I've observed it multiple times. It's, happens a lot, um, much to the chagrin of the police department because, uh, this individual has cameras sitting out front. And so anytime someone parks there, he'll call. And I know I've been called on once, too, because I was looking at the puddle right there, standing in my car with the door kind of half-open looking and I got an officer out immediately and I thought to myself, what in the world is going on? So they get called all the time. And so I had an officer come run plates to make sure where the cars were. And the officer said, I can't tell you how many times I've been called out to this address. It's wasting resources, it's wasting parking spaces and I think it goes against or contrary to what we approved. Um, so I'm going to let this resident know that they need to start parking there or we're going to reconsider that or possibly the council may, um, unless you guys have objections with that. And secondly, I think we should look at Marietta parking because, um, there are some vehicles that are basically, um, permanently parked on the Marietta parking lot.
I've seen that.
And right now, we have an ordinance that says you can't, you have to, a car needs to move every seven days on a public street. The idea is you can't just leave a car there and just walk away from it. Right now, in the Marietta parking lot, we have no restrictions, um, except it does say something about that sixteen parking stalls for two-hour parking and loading zones shall be established where needed, uh, by the authority of the Public Works Director. That's the only requirements we have. So I wanted to see what the council thought about, uh, you know, with our Sutton Park, we have two-hour parking and we have no parking overnight. Um, the, uh, what's the other parking lot? Bellevue, same thing. I'm not looking for two-hour parking.
Okay, I was going to say.
I don't want somebody, I don't even care if it's twenty-four or forty-eight hours or thirteen, you know what I mean? Even three or four days or even a week, but I just want to have some requirement so people can't park a car there and then just leave it forever. We've got one van there that I know we've been looking at now for over two weeks and it hasn't moved. And there's nothing we can do.
And I'm sure Jenny, you can confirm, you park in that lot and so do I.
Yeah, everyone who works there has to park there, so it couldn't be two-hour because that's the only place we can park. But you know, I know, so I'm just clarifying that point. But yeah, I see the same, I see, uh, along the back, well, yeah.
I, what's wrong with three days? I mean, that is a public lot designed for those businesses and people who work in that area. There's no reason for anybody's car to be parked in the same spot for more than...
And if a resident parks in there because there's no place in front of the house, there's no, I have no concerns with that. What, what, what's frustrating to me is there is spots in front of this person's house that are designated for that person and they're parking three vehicles at a time in the Marietta parking lot while those spots are just empty. It's, it's a...
Well, and wasting police resources.
That's fair, but...
And wasting police resources by...
Oh, yeah, a big one.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, uh, three days?
Yeah, that seems...
I, I'm just looking for some, some guideline to, so I can put together an ordinance, um, what the council's comfortable with. I, you know, for a resident, I don't want to have the resident...
Three days is...
They're over there and they don't go to their...
More than enough time.
They have to kind of move it constantly. I'm not looking for that.
Don't you think?
I'm just looking for the long-term vehicles.
Yeah.
I'll add some perspective. In this particular case, there are two spaces in front of this person's house. And invariably, there's no one parked there and he's taking up two spaces. And I'm parking and it's not, I don't care about myself, but, you know, my, my employees are parking two blocks away while these, you know, these spaces are being taken up. And his security, he parks them right in the prime spaces so that the security camera can pick up, you know, whether someone's doing something to his car. And, you know, we give out these residential parking, you know, permits. And the idea is that, you know, we, you know, it's a, it's, it's not a right, you know, that everyone has, but anyone that doesn't have a, uh, a driveway, we've been very generous in allowing them to have exclusive use of this space in front of their house. And if they don't want to use it, then I'm all in favor of making that public parking and let someone, if, if they don't want to use it, then someone else should be able to use it. The statistics on parking spaces, I forget what it is, but, you know, uh, I, I, when we were looking at doing a parking garage and how much it costs to create a space and maintain a space, uh, it's astronomical. And to have private use of public parking spaces for someone's own personal use. And I can tell you that his third vehicle is parked illegally almost always in another parking lot.
Barry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So are you in favor of putting a time limit on the parking lot or are you saying you want to change something about the public parking, about the resident permit on the street?
Well, I...
If we're all in favor of putting the ti, a time, some kind of time limit, let's just talk about a time limit.
I heard seventy-two hours, is that fair? Do we want to go more? As long as I have some, we have no mechanism right now for enforcement, so I can't, there's nothing illegal if somebody wants to park a car there and leave it forever. As long as it's licensed, I can't do anything to it. And I mean, we're not going to go out and look for stuff, but if somebody's been sitting there for two weeks...
I mean, you could do seven days and match the street or because it's a public lot where people use it more frequently, I don't know, you could do a shorter timeframe. I don't care which one, either one is fine with me.
I like the three days.
I like three days because we don't have.
Turn it over.
We don't have to enforce that.
I'll do it.
But, uh, in answer to your question with regards to residential parking, you know, my issue is that if, if we grant someone residential parking, I want them to use it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I don't know any other.
That's a different issue.
Yeah, so you're going to send a letter on.
You're going to send a letter.
And indicate, I just wanted to make sure I'm not the only one who's frustrated with it.
That's fine.
Yeah. Is there, is there only one house there that has that resident parking?
No.
And the others, I've even contacted those residents and asked, you know, how many vehicles and how, how many do you need? And I, I know there should be two open spots. The other residents, there's, there are no problems.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm willing to authorize Anthony to write a letter to the resident, you know, stating that, uh, you know, if you're not going to be using your residential parking permit. Then we need to turn that back into public parking like it was before.
Determined. I'll, I'll put some line, something simple. And I believe once the letter happens, hopefully it'll correct it. But at the same time, it, it highlighted the problem right now when I went in to look at the Marietta code to see what, because, you know, we had to write this van up. And I said, we can't write it up and here's why. I had to look for the code.
Right.
And so now it made me realize we need to change that. Um, and I don't think this is, was written so long ago. That was when our parking lot was half empty. I don't think anyone cared, but there's a high demand for that lot.
Yeah.
Um, alright, thanks for the guidance on that. Um, uh, the town hall event, I, I know we briefly talked about that and council member Wood mentioned our, uh, the Webster Groves. There was, um, a discussion about possibly having one in, in January. Um, I, if, if the council agrees, I could put together a, a, a draft agenda and send it out to the council. And I could put together the information council member Wood said, or any other information that any council member would like to see discussed. Um, if you, if the council agrees, this is a good idea. We could hold it here. I think, I think they were saying January, I think it'd be better to do it the second meeting. It's a little, gives me a little bit more time. But, uh, we can basically put it together for you if you guys would like. But I need, I'll send a draft out to you and you can add and comment and I can refine the agenda to where everyone's in agreement. Does, does that sound like something the council's?
And this is a citywide?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
So does, does, uh, like a six to seven fifteen before the council meeting work for folks? What time did you set? Like six to seven fifteen?
Well, our thought was that or on an off week. The problem is in January, the meetings are late. So if we did it, you know, that was why we thought maybe.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I think the first one, we, yeah, that would be good. I think probably maybe after that, just depending upon the, the feedback we get, we may have to do it on and off.
Doing the off. Yeah, yeah.
Worst case scenario, you start.
The second.
Yeah.
Yeah, later in the month.
Good with that, yeah.
Okay, I'm good with this, too. I'll draft something, maybe a flyer or something together and I'll kind of update the council as we start going. If you guys want to send me all your comments, I'll create a little subfolder and make sure I've got everyone's comments addressed as best as we can.
Thank you.
Um. I just updated. You guys were wondering about the financing the last time we, we did consolidate those, which is obviously.
I didn't go.
Saved quite a bit of money on that. That was good.
Thank you.
If anyone, if, if you haven't looked at, if you haven't been by the skate park, I just had to throw that in there because it's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is crazy.
We were worried about budgeting a little more of that money and, you know, I mean, as far as a bang for a buck, we were getting more, more of our money's worth out of that skate park.
It's amazing.
Any of our parks combined. It's, it is, it is amazing how busy it is. Um, and then, uh, I'll keep you posted on that citizen survey, but, um, that's all I had. I'm.
Have, have there been any, any injuries over at the skate park?
I have not heard of any.
Good.
It doesn't mean there hasn't been some.
Have, have they just.
Some bruises. I'm sure there has, but.
Have they made any, uh?
Serious, no, no calls for service that I'm aware of.
Have they made any, uh, attempts to distribute helmets over there?
Uh, I talked with, uh, Chief Merrill. I, I, they were, they were going to, uh, the next time they're doing their bicycle helmets, Chief Merrill said he's going to try to get a skateboard style helmet. They're a little more expensive and, but he's going to go, he's got Smoloski looking at that. He said he was going to do that. I haven't followed up with him. I'll ask him.
Well, we can talk to some of the retailers or, you know, like Maplewood Bicycle. Of course, theirs are kind of expensive. You know, we don't want to pay three hundred dollars for a bicycle helmet, but, you know, I would, I would like to think that maybe if, if we approached, uh, like Walmart, that maybe we could get them to provide.
The skate, the skateboard style helmets were a little more expensive than the bike helmets. And, and Paul's comment was he thinks all the kids are going to want those because they look cooler.
Mm-hmm.
Than the, the bike helmets, which sit up kind of high. Um, and so.
And they sell them at Walmart.
Yeah. But I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea at all to, to at least try to look into offering that.
I'll make a visit over there then. Uh, anything else, city manager? Uh, do we need a motion to hold a closed session?
Uh, we do, uh, for contract negotiations and a personnel update.
Okay, motion to hold a closed session regarding, um, contact contractual matter?
Personnel.
Personnel.
And personnel issue.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will be in closed session and we'll come back and, uh, adjourn.